Good evening, everybody. We're going to get started very shortly here. I'll do my intro that I've been doing for board members. Your microphones are turned off when you're ready to speak. Please make sure you turn them on, breathe them close to your mouth. It helps with the sound and audio for those that are participating remotely. Mr. Martinez, if you want to take us out of the practice session, and we'll just wait a few minutes. We're almost at seven o'clock to see a few people log in, and then we'll get started. Just another few seconds. Mr. De Silva, we're ready to begin whenever you are.
Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be live streamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is eight eight six four six three one one three two three, and the required password is zero seven five one six five. Please call this meeting to order at seven oh one. Mr. Bleecker, please pull the roll.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Zico.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Devenero.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kizmorsky.
Here.
Dr. Worthy is absent this evening. Mr. De Silva, go ahead.
Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgwood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on May fourth, 2022, in the administrative offices, Sixty Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed in the township clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise, place the flag of our nation, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the Thine of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move executive session to the end of the meeting tonight. So agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. They have a motion to open. Mr. Kizmorsky, second by Mr. Gallo. We are open to the public at seven oh three.
Good evening. Asking a question about...
You need an address, please.
Oh, sorry, Lou Theodore. One hour and a half late. It's agenda item number M, specifically leading school at SCL Castle. So Dr. Dettoro and I have had a conversation about this before. I had a nice conversation with Dr. Vino as well. I've spoken with Mr. Corey and with my wife spoke with Ms. Palacchio about our concerns about the SCL curriculum. About four weeks ago, my daughter saw a... It was a quick video at the beginning of math class about perspective taking, but the last thirty seconds of the video touched on social justice and had a bunch of emblems which were all left leaning. And my daughter came home upset and wanted to know what that was, why they were learning about that in math class. Had a good conversation with the teacher about it. Referred us to Ms. Palacchio. My wife had a conversation with Palacchio. I wasn't privy to that, but she had a good conversation. She said we wanted more information to talk to Mr. Corey. At that point, we wanted to see more of the SCL curriculum and what was going into the SCL curriculum. This guy was fantastic. He showed us a bunch of videos. I gather the district pulls up from a lot of different resources, Castle being one of them, which is why I'm bringing it up here. Lessons, kind of a database where they can pull ideas and lessons from that are kind of, I guess, approved by teachers. But was unable to show us that without us going into his office and seeing it, but he was very kind to let us do that. And then he referred us onto some resources that we could use, Castle being one of them. Castle apparently is a big SCL, I guess you guys would know, but it's a big SCL vendor. Not the vendor you use directly according to Mrs. or according to Dr. Vino, mindful something, but you do pull resource from it. So during research with Castle, I went to their website and immediately... Their website is pretty provocative. Their thing is they want to transform SCL, and they define transforming SCL as a process whereby young people and adults build strong, respectful, and lasting relationships that facilitate co-learning to critically examine the root cause of inequality and develop collaborative solutions, and that leads to personal community and societal being. It's all fine. But this form of SCL is aimed at redistributing power to more fully engage young people and adults in working toward just and equitable schools and communities. And the redistributing power, I mean, that's a needlessly provocative kind of buzzword, especially in today's society, and you guys are going to go through this with the sex ed curriculum. To me, I mean, they're telling you what they're doing. I will give them that. They're not trying to hide it. I mean, the big concern with a lot of parents is that the SCL curriculum becomes an area where kids can become indoctrinated into certain ideas. Certainly, they're exposed to those, and that's okay, but it's not... And my concern is it's not being... They're not getting both sides of the coin. That video only shows, for example, left-leaning emblems. So my question is, how... Why do we use Castle? How hard is it to not use Castle? And how hard would it be for us to have a database so the parents could see the lessons that kids are seeing in school? I talked about it with Mr. Corey. He made it sound like it was impossible that teachers will pull something from somewhere, you know, the night before. And I understand that's good teaching, especially if you're trying to be topical in a topical kind of class. Math may not be that way, but... How... Is it possible for us to... For the parents to see what the kids are seeing? Because my daughter was able to fill up the video on YouTube within four seconds, much better than I would be. And I'm wondering how easy would it be to have a central database and to not use a vendor that's so... I mean, they're telling you what they're doing, but that is using that kind of verbiage.
So let me start with Castle as a whole. Along the lines of the provocative nature, when one looks at Castle's website, there's five key elements of what SCL is. So I don't want to jump over to the statement you're referring to. Let's start from the beginning. When you talk about SCL, there's five key components. Self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness, which means showing understanding and empathy for others. So when you look at all of those specific criteria, in my mind, I feel like it's right for all of our kids to really understand and manage all of those things as they're starting to navigate the social terrain.
Agreed.
Along the lines of Castle, yes, Castle is a warehouse of a number of different resources that people are able to choose from. Mindful Practices is our primary vendor that's been able to come in and provide PD specific to a large number of teachers and parents throughout our district because we know that... And many people have come up here and shared that, especially over the past two years, it's been extremely stressful for our students and staff, and to provide them with the tools that they need to navigate those situations are imperative. So giving them those five key competencies, I think, is extremely important. As it pertains to a warehouse, or a group, or an area to find, to have people have access to those resources, it is a truly impossible task to do because as you look at our curriculum for math, yes, we use everyday math at the elementary level. We use big ideas at the middle school level. But all of the resources that are used, we don't have them housed in a certain place. The supplemental resources that are used. Castle is a supplemental resource, it's not a primary resource. So that is extremely difficult. I'm extremely happy that Ms. Palacchio, Ms. Polway, Mr. Corey, Dr. Vino was able to... You were able to sit down and provide those understandings to you.
So were we, yeah.
So I think that's extremely important that we have those opportunities to sit down and just talk about really where we're going. Along the lines of the video that you're referring to, the video you're referring to, which I saw, was about perspective.
Right.
And the reason why it was done in the math middle school classroom is because we're really trying to create opportunities for our math students to work collaboratively with each other and understand how to effectively work in groups and know that there are different people in different groups that have different perspectives. Let's just talk math content-wise. And to be able to respectfully hear and navigate those conversations are a key element of being a functioning member of society. So along the lines of the political side of it, I don't... That's not a focus of what was discussed in the math classroom. But what I can tell you is the five key competencies of self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness, I think, is truly important for our kids to do. And Castle, understanding that there's a large bank of resources, I think it's important for us to utilize what resources we can and give the kids the skills they need to navigate.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Suebel Eduardo, Five Hampshire Road. I also have the same question on agenda item N. The question I have is, I also have issues regarding the curriculum. So the big question I have is if you look at the state statutes, and again, Dr. Dettoro, I'd like if you... From what I understand, the board sets policy. The question I have is, the school curriculum is, according to your state statutes, this is New Jersey law, "School curriculum is a matter of public record and must be released upon parent request." And this is from your New Jersey and state and federal statutes. New Jersey, "It must be released upon parents' request." A parent could be charged, and they go into that. Again, if you look at the state and federal statute again, you have the right to request a copy of your child's school curriculum. This is regarding social-emotional learning. What they did was they put social-emotional learning into the curriculum. So I actually had some issues with my son who has special needs. I would like to know... So he had an assignment due and was doing an assignment in social studies. And the social studies assignment, I was clicking into his Google Classroom, and the assignment, they were using an app called Alella. So again, Dr. Dettoro, I'm not... I would like for you to not answer this question, but this is for the board. In discussing this with the New Jersey Department of Education, I would like to know, in clicking on the app in my son's Google Classroom, the app is being used, which is Alella. The questions that were asked were not in relation to a social studies assignment. They were under social-emotional learning, and they were asking him questions regarding his opinions regarding wealthy people taking care of people that don't have. Several questions about that. But the Alella app that was being used, three children signed into computers in the classroom, and the Alella app for the school says, "Alella is a pacing-assisted app where students are paced, and they are measuring the student's voice intonation, their verbal cues." So in other words, they're going to tell somebody that's speaking too loudly to slow down, somebody that's talking too fast to slow their pace, somebody that's talking not fast enough. Basically, they're monitoring kids and how they're speaking. It has nothing to do with public speaking. Basically, it's a robot initiative. And what I'd like to know is in what sane society would an app like this be used? And then when I inquired to the school, I went to the school because my son has special needs. I need to know. I was trying to catch him up on his work. This was an accident that I stumbled upon this. The school basically said to me, "I'm ending this conversation," and refused to answer the question about this app, which, because they wouldn't answer this question about the curriculum, landed me on the New Jersey website, which left me digging and digging back into the social-emotional learning, which landed me to speak to the Department of Education, which landed me on the social-emotional... The papers are endless. So my question is, how could it at all be impossible to get our kids' curriculum and even refuse to give us curriculum when then it says, in the New Jersey Department of Ed, one more thing, "You have the federally protected right to review teacher lesson plans, examine textbooks, and other supplemental materials like videos, activities, games, and curriculum and individual daily lesson plans." So the thing is, I wouldn't be on this fishing expedition if somebody would have just told me. This took a couple of weeks.
Okay, so what you're saying is you asked the question, and somebody at school...
And I was outright told, my husband and I both. And this started out innocent, like, hey, I'm trying to catch my son up. My son had an issue which I'm going to speak to at the public portion. He had full refusal. I'm in his Google Classroom trying to catch him up, and this is what he evolved to.
Trying to narrow it down a little bit. So you called the school, asked a question.
I said, "What is this? I'm in the... Can I have the curriculum?"
So you called the school, you asked the question, and somebody said, "We're not going to answer that question," and ended the conversation.
And I quote.
Okay, so in that case, in that case, I would tell you after the meeting, maybe, you know...
That's why I asked Dr. Dettoro to please not get involved because here's the thing, I went to Dr. Dettoro, and he did the right thing.
So he's the guy who would be involved.
Dr. Dettoro told the school to get back to me, and they're still refusing the curriculum.
So then Dr. Dettoro is exactly the guy that needs to get involved after the meeting.
Correct, but the school is still leading me on goose chases. They're not giving curriculum. So my question to you is, the board is responsible for curriculum posting on the websites and for the parents, not the school. You set policy to ensure the laws are met, and that's what the Board of Ed told me today.
And if you're telling me that the law is not met, then I'm telling you after this meeting, let's have a conversation with Dr. Dettoro.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Motion to close.
No, no, no. Good evening. Robert Ferguson, 23 Apertares. I was going to talk to issue seventeen A, the annual budget. Just want to follow up with you guys. I know Council President May spoke last meeting about forming some... Getting together and have a meeting to talk about ways we can cooperate. Would also like to see what the status of that was. We took a look at some of the things that we could work on together, including paving. We did take a look at the current job spec that was speced out for us, for you guys, for the school board, for the high school. Just based on our back-of-the-envelope estimates, working together, we could have saved almost $200,000 on that project. There's a lot of synergies we can do together. So the sooner we can start having these conversations, the better because we do want to work together and want to find ways to work at it for both the taxpayers and for you guys. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Rob. And I know that there... We do have a... Not a bad hot committee, but Mike and John are putting together some information to meet with you guys very quickly. Anyone else? I have a motion to close. Mr. Kizmorsky, second by Mr. Copeland. Superintendent's report, Dr. Dettoro, what do you offer us?
I have some great news. I'll start with Ramapo Ridge. The Ramapo Ridge students and administration invited me to meet with some student representatives because they're preparing for our incoming sixth graders. Their student orientation, the parents are coming, as well as the students. The students will be walked around. They'll be able to see the school, understand the different programs. And these student representatives, which were a part of the sixth through eighth grade, wanted to put together really a recipe for our students to be successful. They looked at all the different opportunities and how they navigate schools, whether it's to be organized, or responsible decision-making, or academically sound, or creating those social connections with the students. So they were able to create really a cheat sheet of how to be successful at the middle school. So that's going to be shared with our parents, as well as our students. And I really appreciated the student voice that came out during that meeting. The kids were excited to act as a support for the new students. They remembered how they felt walking into a new school. And I appreciate administration and the students' feedback on that. So it was definitely a bright spot last week. We have a couple more bright spots. Mawa High School was selected for the 2022 Best High School Silver Award by U.S. News and World Report. What is a silver award, you might ask? U.S. News and World Report 2020 Best High Schools ranks schools based on student-teacher ratio, college readiness, Advanced Placement Index, proficiency in math, as well as proficiency in ELA. There are three categories. There's gold, which is the top 500, silver, and bronze. As I said, we are silver. Mawa was ranked forty-three in New Jersey out of 424 schools. Last year, we were forty-six, so we're going in the right direction. We were 1,088 out of high schools nationally. Last year, we were 1,095, yet again, going in the right direction. And those rankings are out of 24,000 public high schools in the country. So we're in a really good space. How do we do against our Bergen County schools? Well, out of over fifty schools, we are ranked tenth in Bergen County. So that's really a testament to not only our teachers at the high school, which are doing a great job, but John Pascal always says that he greatly appreciates our K-five teachers of really building strong foundations that they can build upon once they get to the high school. So it's a great opportunity for us to celebrate the great work that's happening here in Mawa. Another big accomplishment for one of our students at the high school. This was a headline just this morning. "Twelve Bergen County High School Students Have Won Corporate-Sponsored National Merit Scholarship Awards." The first group of winners were announced. To be a finalist, the semifinalist, and the high school official must submit a detailed scholarship application, according to the National Merit Scholarship Committee. The application must include information about the semifinalist's academic record, participation in school and community activities, demonstrated leadership abilities, employment, and honors and awards received. A semifinalist must have an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, write an essay, earn SAT and ACT scores that confirm that the student's early performance on the qualifying test. I'm happy to report. One of those award winners is Ashida Jane of Mawa, who is... Her probable career will be in the field of medicine. Jane won the National Merit Siemens Scholarship and attends Mawa High School. So congratulations on that prestigious honor. Last but not least, this came in yesterday. Our very own Coach Remo recorded his 500th win as a coach here in Mawa with a 12-1 win over Ridgefield Park for boys' baseball. The breakdown of those 500 wins, I know you were going to ask. In football, 121 wins. In softball, 118 wins. And in baseball, 261 wins. So congratulations not only to Coach Remo, but to all the athletes in which we've served over the years. So...
That's all I have?
That's it?
That's it? Mr. Bleecker, what do you got?
Okay, I have two reports this evening. Just break this up. Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Yes, great. Okay, so two reports this evening. First is our budget presentation. As I've said at the last two meetings, tonight is our last meeting discussing the budget for the 2223 year. This is the... Tonight is our budget hearing. This is an annual presentation that is made. This is the last... One of the last pieces for adopting and initiating the 2223 budget. So I'm going to review a couple of slides. The slides are going to be repetitive from what I presented of the last couple of meetings regarding the 2223 budget. One piece of new information, which I'll point out when I get to it. First is recap of the revenue for the 2223 year. The first and most significant part of revenue is our tax levy. Tax levy is just over $68,737,000. This represents a 1.43% increase from last year. This is the tax levy that is assessed to taxpayers of the district for both our operating account as well as our debt service account. We have a state aid of over $4 million, representing almost a 14% increase from last year. Other miscellaneous revenue of about $227,000. A fund balance, which is revenue that we use from other budgets to help fund the 2223 budget, again, for both our debt service account as well as our operating account. Special revenue account, where we have federal and state aids of just under $700,000. And then we have a revenue from our capital reserve account to fund two potential capital projects, both are HVAC renovation projects, one at Bessie Ross Elementary School, and one at George and Washington Elementary School. For grand total budget for the 2223 year of $79,302,771. For the tax impact, there are two major drivers, and this is the one change that I said has differed from the original presentation that I made. The debt service has stayed the same. Debt service is decreasing, $353,000 from last year. The debt service, again, is the taxpayer's obligation on bond and interest payments that have previously been approved. The other is the increase from the operating budget tax levy of 2% from the prior year. So we have an increase of 2% from the prior year. It's $1,325,917. Originally, when I presented to the board on March 25th, I had shared that at that time, there was a part of that calculation that represented Public Law 2020, Chapter 44, which was new at that time, was brand new for this year. I said at that time that that was being challenged. The calculation used to arrive at the... At that time, was a deduction of $207,000. Ultimately, since then, over 100 districts in the state appealed to the state regarding that calculation, and ultimately, it was returned to us. So that full $207,000 was returned to us, which brings us to our full tax, maximum tax ability from one year to the next of 2%. To put the tax impact into numbers, again, pulling this from our slide at an earlier presentation, we have a net valuation taxable for the township of Mawa of $5,786 million. That's an increase of about $11.5 million from the prior year. And this is the base that our tax levy would be spread across. The average value of a home for the 2022 calendar year is $478,179, an increase of $866 from the prior year. And for the tax impact, for every $100,000 of value that a home in Mawa has, $1,179 of that is... Helps to fund the budget for the 2223 year. It's an increase of $18.60 from the prior year. For the average value of a home that I mentioned earlier, $478,000, that equates to $5,640 is the tax impact, an increase of $88.94 from last year, from the calendar year 2021. We also spoke during the budget presentations about enrollment. February 2022 enrollment for the township, for the district, was 2,735 students. These are students that are here within our six schools in Mawa, representing both general ed and special ed. We have Abbott District students that attend placements outside of Mawa, 62 special ed, and then 44 county or VOTech students. Our debt service, I mentioned it a little while ago, but we have two bonds that are currently outstanding in 2223. Payments on the principal for those bonds is $1,075,000, as well as payment of $44,883. And one of those bonds, we are going to make the final payment next year in the 2223 year. And for the other... And for the other bond that's remaining, we have one more year left on that. We'll be making the final payment in the following fiscal year, 2324. Special revenue, again, as to refresh from a prior presentation, represents any funds that we receive from another state or federal government entity, governmental entity. So from federal government, we anticipate receiving funds for IDEA as well as ESSA. ESSA is formerly known, maybe more popular known as Title I, Title II, the NCLB funds. Also from the state, we receive some funds that are dedicated for some of the non-public schools that are within our township. We are a pass-through for those funds, so the state provides those funds to us. And then we work with the non-public schools within our township to provide those funds to them. Schools that primarily get that would be Young World Day School. Apple Montessori also gets some funds as well, which I'll anticipate for next year is just under $700,000. Out-of-district costs, as I said earlier, we have 62 special ed students who are out-of-district and 44 regular ed students that are out-of-district. Those regular ed students are high school level students attending Bergen County Technical and Vocational Schools or Bergen County Academies. Budget for next year in the 2223 for that tuition is $6,252,000. Another large piece of the budget is employee benefits. Employee benefits representing 14.2% of the total operating budget, or right around $10,500,000. Employee benefits covers several different areas. Covers prescription benefits, health benefits, any contractual benefits such as tuition reimbursement, or any payment for accumulated sick time that may be eligible to employee when they retire in the district. For staffing for next year, we have a total staffing to support salaries for our staff of $38,797,000. This is the largest single portion of our budget. We have 499 staff that are going to be supported next year in the 2223 budget. The staff are spread across three collective bargaining associations, the Mawa Engineers Association, Administrators Association, Supervisors Association, as well as independent contracts with paraprofessionals. In total, after looking at some enrollment changes in the district, as well as some programmatic changes, we're having a net increase of 1.2 FTE for the 2223 year in staff. Transportation was an area that we also highlighted in the last brief budget presentation. For transportation, we have a budget of $4,758,000, about 6% of the total budget. This is for transportation for students going both to and from our six schools within the township, as well as students providing some of the out-of-district places that I spoke about earlier. It also includes transportation costs for any field trips or for athletic events that are needed throughout the year as well. Transportation in Mawa is split amongst contracted services as well as our own transportation staff. We have four drivers and one driver who is designated as an athletic and a substitute driver. We operate a fleet of 10 buses here in Mawa. And the budget does include the replacement of one of our buses for next year. Buses in the state of New Jersey have a, are required to be replaced after a maximum of 14 years in service. And one of the last items I want to speak about is strategic planning in the budget. As we had said, this is strategic planning. We have looked at throughout the entire course of the year and tried to infuse it and incorporate it wherever possible. We took special care during the building of the 2223 budget to make sure that the items, the program changes that we were looking at and including tie into that strategic plan. Our last board meeting, when I discussed budget, I went to a little more detail regarding the four areas of our strategic plan and how the budget funded each one of those areas. And with that, that concludes the presentation for the 2223 budget. Just want to take a moment to thank the way that played a part in developing the budget for next year. Of course, the Finance Facility Committee of the Board, Central Office Administration and Child Study Team, our principals, supervisors, other support staff, and of course, the Business Office for helping with all the support documentation and preparing any submissions that remain to the county. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board for the 2223 budget?
Can you just get to the public for a moment, what the next steps are? So if we adopt tonight, then what happens?
Sure, of course. One thing I did want to mention, I forgot to, I mentioned at our last meeting, we did, after we first approved the preliminary budget in March, that was submitted to the county offices. It came back with no corrections needed from the county office as far as the financial end of the budget. A few tweaks to some narratives that we had submitted, but for the financial end, no changes were required from then. After the board's action tonight regarding the 2223 budget, I have a couple of next steps to do within the budget software itself to submit it to the county and mark it as final. Within 48 hours, the district is required to post on our website a user-friendly version of the 2223 budget, which is required to be housed throughout the school year. We have a special section on the Business Office page of our website where we house that user-friendly budget for not only the 2223 year, as well as prior years as well. And the last part of that, Mr. Gallo, is within the next couple of weeks, within our budget software that we use here in Mawa, we will initiate and, for lack of a better word, turn on the budget for next year to allow us to start any purchase orders and things like that that would be tied to or attributable to these funds, can make it to be printed and sent to any vendors that need to go to. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, that was the first presentation I have for tonight. I do have one more. And that is an update to the Board of Education regarding the replacement of the grandstand at Mawa High School Stadium, as well as the renovation to the running track. This was a project that was put into the 2122 budget as a project to be funded, both projects, to be funded through a reserve from capital withdrawal, from our capital reserve account. We wanted to make a special effort to present this to the board tonight, as well as any members of the public that might be here. These plans that you're going to see are going to be submitted to the Planning Board for the Township of Mawa. They have a meeting on Monday night, May 9th, where they'll be hearing this. Our engineering firm, Layton Associates, will be making a presentation to them as a courtesy to make the Planning Board aware of this project as well. For board members, you have the full plans that are going to be shared to the Planning Board in front of you. I'm not going to go through every page of the plan. There's about 15 or 16 pages there. I did choose to highlight a couple to spotlight some areas of the replacements that are most warranted, highlight and recognition here. Some of the other details, such as underground drainage pipes and the construction of that, I left out. And with that, I'm just going to take my laptop here. I'm going to put down the microphone. I'll speak a little bit louder for everybody to hear me. Helps me control everything a little bit. So we have our main cover page showing the track and the grandstand. This page here, zoom it in a little bit. This is a representation of our current grandstand right now. You'll see underneath these little circles everywhere represent a pier or a post that the grandstand sits on. There's about 125 posts that currently the grandstand sits on. This also is a representation of the existing pathways and paved areas that provide access to the front of the grandstand. I do want to point out, this checkered area right here and over here, while we were doing research and evaluating the area, it was identified that there are some previously used abandoned underground tanks that were once used for the septic system here on the campus prior to sanitary sewer lines being in place. Those are still located underground there. We will have to do some work to properly fill those and encapsulate them. They do not need to be fully removed, but we do need to take some action to fill those before the new grandstand, any piers or posts are put in place for the new stand. Okay, on to the next one. This is, so what is being done is at the Planning Board meeting on Monday evening, we're presenting both, and we've said it to the state, plans for both the track renovation as well as the replacement of the grandstand. While this is encompassed under one project here, we are going to be bidding it out as two separate projects. I'll speak for a moment about the track renovation right now. This is not a full milling and repaving of the full track, for those that may not be familiar. Underneath the rubber surface that the track currently has, there is pavement and macadam underneath that. That pavement and macadam, there are a few areas where cracks have been identified that we will have to refill, but it does not require a full replacement and removal of that asphalt underneath that this time. That's something that probably within another 10 to 15 years, we will have to look at. But for right now, this is just going to be a renovation where we're going to be removing the top surface and then applying a new surface on top of that. In particular, I wanted to point out that the, these areas on either end of the field, which are called the D zones, there is some drainage within these areas, particularly along the radius between the track and the field area here. These drains on both sides have deteriorated to the point where we do need to replace them. So that will be part of this project. The same drains are, run along the length on the top and the bottom of the field. Those are still in good condition. We do not need to replace those at this time. The other area I wanted to point out on this page is this area right here. Currently, this area is not part of the track. It's just a grass area. But we are looking at including that as a possible alternate to help with the high jump events that are held right here for student athletes who are coming in and making the transition to the high jumps. So this is one area that we may add on to when we bid out the project. Before I move much further, that last page is most of what we have about the track. Are there any questions specific about the track renovation before I move on to the grandstand where there's more to discuss there? With the grandstand, this is a proposed layout and plan of the new grandstand. As I pointed out on the previous page, there was over 100 posts and piers beneath the current grandstand that helped support it. With newer technology, newer ways of building now as opposed to when the grandstand was built, which we went back and found that it was at least built in the late 1960s. We don't need 125 posts to support it anymore. We only have about 25 to 30 that would help support the grandstand, the new grandstand. So it would be a lot more space underneath. What that space is going to allow us to do, what the financing facility wanted to include, was some storage units underneath. So we have three storage units for some of the various items that are used for our athletic events, for track, for soccer. Currently, right now, we have some shipping containers, the storage units that it is being housed in. We want to have those removed as part of this process and have those items that are currently in those containers located underneath the bleachers a little bit more out of the way. This does provide access doors on all sides. We have one deeper unit right here for any storage of any longer items. And over here, there's going to be an area where our medical cart that right now we use for any athletic events can be parked inside here with proper hookups for charging it. One other item to point out about the grandstand, it's a big difference from what we have right now, is there's going to be about an eight to 10 feet space between where the fence line of the last track lane is and the grandstand starts. So right now, our grandstand is right up against that last lane of the track. This will provide about an eight to 10 feet worth of space between that fence line for the last lane of the track and where the grandstand begins. There's two ways for anybody who might be who needs special accessibility onto the grandstands. We have a ramp that's going to be located on the outside over here. And also from underneath the grandstand right here is another ramp that extends to the top, or to the first landing floor of the grandstand. Stair access is over here and over here as well. So four different ways to enter and go on to the grandstands. Getting a little bit more detail. Want to highlight this number right here. So a little more detail on what the capacity of the grandstand is. We're going to have a capacity of bench seats of 1,341. There's going to be 12 spaces dedicated for wheelchair access, a total seat count of 1,353. Have that compares to what we have currently. They're very much the same. We have approximately 1,300 right now. So we're going to be gaining about 50 spots as well as those dedicated areas for wheelchair access with the new grandstand. Here's a view of the side. So again, this is a side view of how those storage units underneath would look under the grandstand and show some of the elevation. There is, I forgot to count before we have, but we have approximately 20 to 25 rows of seats that we are planning for. There will be going up the middle. There will be a railing up the middle as well to help with access up to the top flight of the stairs, as well as the press box, which is on the, oh, starts to show on this side. So here's another side view. But what I like about this side view, it does give you a side view of the press box, chain link fence around the top where roof where videographers may sit, as well as chain link fence around here to protect anybody for safety purposes from Eddie Falls. It's a four-foot-high chain link fence. And what this is, this press box right now, it's more elevated than what the current one is. Its placement also is above that top row where right now, the press box is aligned with the top row on either the left and right. It's not sitting above it. And this is the last page that I have, but this gives us a good detail of the inside of the press box. This is why I wanted to include it. So the press box, and the press box is a modular press box. So the entire thing is going to be built off-site. It's going to be trucked here, and then we're going to have a crane pick it up and then put it in place on top of the steel when it is put in place. Here's a layout of the roof. We have one access hatch here to get on top of the roof. And again, there's going to be chain link around for safety purposes. As far as the inside of the press box, there's going to be one area for visiting teams, coaching staff, home teams, coaching staff, or vice versa. And then the officiating for football games would be in the middle. During events, other sporting events other than football, we don't see, we may not be using one of those offices. But again, for the football, we wanted to have this. And this is a common in any new grandstands or press boxes that are being built at this time. Here's a view of the front, again, across the back and across the top, chain link fence. We have windows that will operate out for that will be, can be opened as well. Heat is included within the press box. We have univentilators that would provide, or, pardon. Split units, thank you. Split units that would provide heating and air conditioning inside the press box as well. And the last one before I talk about the next sequence of events is again, a side view of the press box here. Some more detail as far as the materials that go into it. We also would keep any networking equipment that we need in here for things such as the scoreboard, the lights. Camera systems would also be housed, speaker systems would also be housed within the press box as well. As far as the next couple of stages for this project, as I had said earlier, on Monday evening, it's going to be presented to the Planning Board. Shortly afterwards, later on the month of May, we hope to have the project out to bid with a potential award, possibly at our June 15th meeting, but more likely at our July 15th meeting. The projected timeframe of doing work is going to be work to be done after this upcoming fall sports season. So after the 22 fall football soccer season is completed, we begin demo and do some of the steelwork over the winter months with the press box and sort of the finishing touches being put in place at the end of winter, beginning of spring. Following this grandstand project is when the track would be done. So the track project, which again, is going to be a So the track project, which again, is going to be a separate project, that would be done after the spring '23 sports season. That is very much dependent on weather for the, the rubber surface that's applied. The temperature has to be a minimum of 60 degrees and rising when that applies, so it's very much contingent on the weather of when that, that part of the project would be done. These plans, while they are going to the planning board right now, they could still have some tweaks, some modifications made if there's any that do come up, but for the most part, these are going to be the final plans that are going to be going out to bid on, barring anything unforeseen. Any questions regarding projects?
From a planning standpoint, Kyle, here, so the summer of '23 is basically when you're looking into the track.
Yeah, yeah. Following the spring '23 season.
So it won't impact any high school's athletic season?
Should not, no.
Probably we'll use the field next spring and football will use.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Mr. Gobler, you can keep the, the phone off because supporting my report is going to be.
Got one more. Okay. Sorry, everybody, just a few more. I know you have, I've talked more tonight than I usually do, but I just want to highlight a couple of meetings on the agenda. Item 17L, just to thank you again to the Bacchus State for making another contribution to the district. This is a contribution that has been on the board agenda a couple of times. This is the last allocation. There were some funds that were held in reserve for any final tax payments that the state had to pay. Those have been paid. This is the last installment that we will, we will be receiving for the Bacchus State. Again, thank very much to the state for their generous donation to the district. Along with this is the resolution right before it, 17K. As interest rates are starting to rise, we are going to take some of the funds that we have, put it into a CD so they can mature and gain interest, maximize the interest that they can earn for next year. And lastly, item 17BB and CC, just want to thank the coordination of the township for the lease of land. There are two pieces of land, for those that do not know, that the board that owns and leases back to the township for the purpose of providing recreational fields and activities to the community. Again, look forward to continuing that apartment, partnership with the township for another five years. That's my report.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yeah, Kyle, could you please remind the public about the generous donation from the Bacchus family, how many, how much money they have already given to us? I mean, approximately, doesn't it?
Yeah, it was, it was an extremely donor, extremely generous donation, Ms. Akon, and I'll leave that. We have not disclosed the, the full sum. The Bacchus estate, when the, when, it was from a, a really relatively unknown family within the community. When I first received the phone call, there was a, an allocation from the estate that was due to us. I never expected it to be the amount that was. Again, I'll, I'll leave it at a very generous amount. We haven't disclosed the full amount, but again, very generous amount from a, really an unknown source. We're happy to learn a little bit about the family through this process, and again, can't be thankful enough for them for this donation.
Okay. Dr. Fair.
Good evening. So the first piece is, you'll see we have a retiree to honor, Ms. Powers, who has such an important job in the district as a preschool teacher. She interfaces with our youngest of students. So when I asked Mr. Waika, the building principal of Honeybee Meadows, and Mrs. Eason, our assistant principal, some adjectives that we could use to describe Marge, they shared that she can be characterized as accomplished, inventive, and thoughtful. We honor and thank Marge for her 18 years of dedication and service to the Maua Township Schools and her creativity and ability to make things come to life in the preschool program. And we hope that she knows that this is how she's going to be remembered. For her devotion and hard work as a preschool teacher and introducing children to their first formative years of school, we wish Mrs. Powers a well-deserved and relaxing retirement. We hope that she enjoys this new journey of her life and we congratulate her. You'll see on this evening's agenda, we also have 14 new hires, as well as three asterisks for agenda items 18Q, 18R, and 18S. You have those resumes sitting before you. I just want to sincerely thank the board for your support and your flexibility. We just hired these three new staff members, or we're going to be recommending them to you for approval this past Monday. So that's why they, they didn't make it to the agenda last week. The next piece, I want to highlight Maua High School. They just recently had a college and career fair, and it, not only was it a successful event for our students, but we were able to showcase a wide continuum of options for our kids for, for all different types of students. So we included Berkeley College, Lincoln Tech, the Terry O'Connor Real Estate School, and Bergen County Law and Public Safety, which were, were nice additions. And, and the last piece, Dr. Otoro and I have been talking to Maua High School about, and we've, we've shared this with the board, about, you know, really branding and showcasing your work. What they did here, and Kyle has it emanated from his laptop on the screen here, we've been talking about the career pathways program and dual enrollment, and what Mr. Pascal and the high school team were able to do is create a much easier to navigate system where teachers, students, and families will be able to, to navigate a variety of resources. So on the left-hand side, Guidance has a, a wealth of resources related to anything from guidance procedures and school counseling and scheduling to pre-college enrichment experiences and resources for college and career counseling. And underneath Find Your Path, Mr. Bleecker, if you could just scroll down and keep scrolling, you'll see here, we have showcased all of our career pathways. So that's inclusive of biotechnology research and health science, business administration, engineering and technology, government and social sciences, information and computer science technology, performing and communication arts, technical career and community, and visual and integrated design. And Mr. Bleecker, if you could just select one of them, I just want to showcase for the board and the public, under Find Your Path, students and families are able to peruse the career pathways overview, as well as the trajectory of coursework related to each pathway, along with associated co-curricular opportunities and relevant goals associated with each of those pathways, along with images of each pathway program in action. So if you could just, just scroll down briefly, this gives, gives our families and our students as they're navigating high school, a real comprehensive look, a real easy to understand snapshot for parents to then, and students to then, if they have clarifying questions, they can obviously go to other school counselors. But I thought it was really worthy to note that the rebranding or the, the more overt branding is, is a reality, and we appreciate their efforts. And that's it for my, my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
President's report. Dr. Morthe did leave some, some stuff here for me. First, the board would like to congratulate Melanie Gilbert, who's a junior, and Colin Mossman, who's a freshman, who have been accepted into the 2022-23 All-States for us. That's quite an accomplishment. They will be performing in Atlantic City and NJ PAC in Newark next November. So congratulations to Melanie and Colin. And I'd like to read a resolution that we're adding to new business tonight, if I may. Honoring Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas the strength of Maua Township's education is a reflection of the teachers of this district, each of whom dedicates their time and efforts toward ensuring that every student has a chance to succeed, and whereas while the importance of their efforts is sometimes taken for granted, teachers are shaping the next generation of citizens and entrepreneurs who will lead this nation for years to come. And whereas in light of these contributions, it is altogether fitting and proper for the Maua Township Public Schools to formally honor the first full week in May as Teacher Appreciation Week, which has been annually observed as the Teacher, or National Teacher Appreciation Week since 1985. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Maua Board of Education honors the work of all educators in the Maua Public, Maua Township Public Schools and expresses its sincere appreciation for their efforts and their collective and dedicated work in supporting all students of the Maua Township Public Schools. So that is added as 17EE under our reading this semester. We have any committee reports tonight? Mr. Gobler.
Just two real quick. I didn't put a whole presentation together tonight, but I just want, from community corner, just want to wish everyone a very Happy Mother's Day. Ms. Devenero, Ms. Akon, Dr. Morthe, Dr. Torino, and Ms. Rizzo, Happy Mother's Day, and to everyone out there, have a great day. And guys, just have a couple more days to find the cards for the kids. Get out there and find them. Second report is on the transportation bidding. We had our first meeting last week. I want to thank everyone for attending. We've put together, we're working on putting together our goals and objectives, and I want to thank Mr. Bleecker for, for helping us and starting us on the, on the path of Transportation 101 and getting a better understanding of what the transportation program is. With that being said, I do want to encourage the residents, if you have any questions or suggestions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to me from a transportation standpoint. We are looking for feedback and we'll be putting together some kind of feedback form that we'll be sending out, but in the meantime, you can find my email address and feel free to shoot me an email with any kind of questions or ideas or suggestions. So appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Who else? Mr. Gallo. I'm just going to comment on the grandstand project for a moment. This, this project, when I first heard about this project from Scott Van der Mark a number of years ago, I was a little skeptical of like, you know, what's it really going to do for us? It has become a transformational project for our high school and for our district, together with the concession stand project, which we completed two years ago. That entire area will be completely renovated and renewed. Our goals of creating ADA access, addressing storage requirements that have been unmet for years and have met through a hodgepodge of semi-effective methods, and also setting back the grandstand from the track. They don't sound like much, but in total, the project is transformative of that area. We, the class of 93 alumni who are on our committee have further visions of what we can do with that space, but it is going to be, it is going to dramatically improve the appearance, the functionality, and safety of the area, as well, and the press box, considering where we, our press box is, box is today, this is a, this is a huge leap forward in terms of functionality. This was a project that Roger Pelletier, John Pascal, Greg, Kyle, our engineers and architects at Land Associates spent a lot of time on, and other committees spent a lot of time on. We gave a lot of comments, some detailed, some more strategic, but I look forward to this project coming to fruition. It's an expensive investment in our facilities, but it'll be enduring for many, many years and service our students for years and years to come. So I'm very thankful and grateful for Kyle and his team and all the folks who've contributed to the ultimate design. So I just wanted to mention that.
Who else? Denise.
The Policy Committee has four policies and regulations on tonight's agenda for first reading. This is based on our review of the 6,000 series, which we actually completed. Basically, these are just formatting and grammar punctuation changes, nothing really substantial.
Stop. Don't undercut our work. It's important.
Eddie, who else?
Okay, from the Executive Committee on 17P, we have the second reading of the five bylaws that we, that we learned at last night. Any board member remarks on non-agenda items? Mr. Gobler.
Yeah, on, on April 22nd, I had the honor of going in and presenting in front of our DECA club. I want to thank Ms. Ferguson and Ms. Torino for inviting me. Again, we spoke about branding and marketing, and you know about the high school clubs, they meet during lunch. So it, it was interesting and fun watching the, the kids eat lunch at 10:00 in the morning. So that was an interesting thing. But I also want, the reason I mentioned it tonight is just to highlight again the better partnership. If, if you're not on it, please get on it. If you have a skill, if you have knowledge of some topic, please put your name on there. It is a resource that our, our staff are using. They're using it more, and as we grow this list and this database and make it more robust, it's going to become a, a greater resource for our staff. So I'm encouraging everyone out there, please put your name on there. It is extremely rewarding to go in there, regardless of what school you're going to, because I know all of our schools are using it. So please, you know, I'm looking at everyone here on, on the board, but I'm also asking everyone in the public to please put your name on there and, and get involved, because it definitely is, is a wonderful burden to have. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Anyone else?
Okay, old business. May I have a motion on minutes for the last meeting? Mr. Kazmarski, second by Ms. Akon. Mr. Bleecker?
Okay. Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Akon.
Yes.
Mr. Gobler.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
And Mr. DeSova.
Yes.
New business. I'd like to entertain a motion on A through DD.
A through D.
Yeah, I'm sorry, A through DD. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Kazmarski. Any comments? I'd like to throw out there, thank you to Kyle for the budget, you know, being involved in that process is, you know, almost, oh, close to $80 million. It's a, it's a big job. It's a lot of work and, you know, it's a lot of coordination, so great job. Thank you.
For 17A through DD, Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Akon.
Yes.
Mr. Gobler.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes, but I will abstain from 17BB and 17CC. I would however like to thank the board for the completion of the lease of township or the use of the field.
And Mr. DeSova.
Yes. And if I can have a motion on 17EE, which is the resolution that I read earlier. Ms. Akon, second by Mr. Gobler.
For resolution 17EE, Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Akon.
Yes.
Mr. Gobler.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, and thank you to all our teachers.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
And Mr. DeSova.
Yes.
And new business, I'd like to take, entertain a motion on A through NN. Mr. Denise, second by Dr. Park.
18A through NN, Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Akon.
Yes.
Mr. Gobler.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
And Mr. DeSova.
Yes.
Public questions or comment? Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May I have a motion to open to the public? Mr. Gobler, second by Mr. Kazmarski, and we're open at 8:08.
Good evening. John F. Hagen, 20, Falmouth Court, Maua, New Jersey. Two small things. One, thank you Kyle for the presentation on the new track and the grandstand. I'm not familiar with that area, but while you're doing this, it's a good opportunity to make sure that that grandstand, the access to it by emergency vehicles, very, very important. You know, with 1,500 people or so in the grandstand... You know, with fifteen hundred people or so in the grandstand, you want to get an ambulance in there and out very quickly, very nicely. It could be great right now, I have no idea, but while you're doing it, you might as well include an emergency vehicle access, so it's real simple, in and out.
John was recently promoted to driver for Mawa.
I'm in training to be an ambulance driver for Mawa, and I don't want ever to see you guys in the back of my ambulance. I'm not going to drive you to Valley. The second thing is, yes, I saw that Facebook post about that young lady from Mawa High School winning that National Merit Scholarship. Fantastic, that is to be recognized and celebrated, really, really good. But, you know, I looked at Facebook and there are other scholarships, not to the same extent, but I believe the Republican Club is offering five hundred dollars and the Pride Group is five hundred dollars also. Is, my assumption is that somebody at the high school senior level is pulling all that together and telling everybody about that and we're not missing any opportunity. The Republican Club Scholarship is near and dear to my heart because I gave five hundred dollars, that's my, that's my money. And I did it, and I, I'm not here to be boastful about it, but I did it because Rick De Silva, he has made a lot, he and his family have made a lot of contributions to Mawa, and when I was at the Mawa Museum, he was the one who provided a very nice check for the new historical marker right in front of the station, so I was always very impressed by that. I know he's, he and his family have done a lot of things for Mawa, and I don't own a thought dealership, so in my own way, I can contribute, make, I can make some contribution at my level. So I'm glad that people are doing this and pulling things together. Thank you for your time.
My daughter is a two-time runner-up winner of the Republican Essay Contest. She got five hundred bucks between, she got your five hundred dollars.
Well, I hope it's open to any high school senior who lives in Mawa, and that would be good if it was a Mawa High School student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Danielle Ryan, twenty-two River View Terrace, Mawa. I've talked about this before, I got the email about now the testing being offered to students, COVID testing to students. Wondering if there's, like, how this came about in terms, are we getting funding from somewhere for offering this service, or is it just something that we're doing? And just where that came from, because I didn't, I'm not in the schools, I didn't know students weren't allowed access till now, so.
Yeah, so it's federally funded, so it's no out-of-pocket for the district. We've had it available for staff. We started to provide it as a service for those who remained unvaccinated and the state mandate to have unvaccinated staff members tested weekly, so we've offered that to our staff members. And through the remainder of the school year, we thought it would be ideal to just offer it to students who may be presenting with symptoms and their parents aren't, you know, able to get to a doctor, they don't want to wait in line, we have the service here for them.
Okay. As I've brought up, again, like, this just seems like such a huge conflict of interest that we're providing testing for students while simultaneously offering cash to the nurses for every positive case.
That's not happening, Danielle.
The nurses aren't involved in the testing, it's an outside agency, so there's, there's no conflict. We discontinued our contact tracing, that's what you're referring to along lines of the compensation, so that's no longer in place.
Okay, because just to be clear, I've asked previously, it was stated that even if a case didn't require contact tracing, that they were still getting that bonus, so that's no longer.
Now, what took place, along the lines of, even if the case didn't take any contact tracing, so there was a protocol that was in place when contact tracing occurred. We were talking about even if they didn't need to identify, if no close contacts were identified, that's a whole different situation, but they still have to go through the protocol when contact tracing was happening, to make sure that they're interviewing the case, ident, really going back the certain amount of days that they needed to, to identify what were this interaction with the different parties, work with the staff and the administration to make sure that it was a comprehensive in nature. Identifying close contacts, there were cases that there were no close contacts identified. That's different. Right now, we don't have close contact, we don't have contact tracing happening, we discontinued that a couple weeks back.
Yes, I know, so the work, so, because the way that, I don't know what it's called, the resolution was worded, was that this would continue through the end of the year, so you're saying, because I didn't see anywhere that this, that that resolution had since ceased, so it no longer exists, since contact tracing ended, that stopped.
Yeah, so upon the discontinuation of contact tracing, that compensation structure no longer exists.
Okay.
And in terms of the onsite testing, our in-house nurses have nothing to do with it, so we had, there's an outside vendor who has nurses, and those nurses come here on Tuesdays and Fridays to gather the specimens.
So previously though, let's say a teacher got tested and was positive, because I thought I asked this question and that it was responded that even without contact tracing, you would still be entitled to that money. So what you're saying is if a teacher tested positive, required, did not, did not require contact tracing, or even if they did, wouldn't the nurse was receiving money even though an outside agency was conducting the testing, or did they, our nurses did the school testing?
I think, I think what the confusion is, the two, you're merging the two, so what's taking place is, there's, the contact tracing takes, takes place when there's a positive case, that's in and of itself, right?
Yeah, nothing more.
That was discontinued a couple weeks ago. Then there's testing. The testing is, there's positives and negatives. A positive triggers in the past, the need for contact tracing, that no longer occurs. If you are a positive, then you are removed, if you're not vaccinated for X period of time, but that, those two things are not going together currently. Am I answering your question, or am I confused on that question? Sorry.
The way it was worded to me, I was under the impression, and I think I asked and was told, that no matter what, contact tracing or not, it was just positive case, period.
Yeah, so in, in the past, when we had that compensation structure in place, yes, a positive case triggered the, the compensation that you're referring to, because it still required the school nurse to interface with the staff member or the student to determine if there were close contacts or not. So it still was time spent to figure out if there were close contacts and to go through that process. So that, before contact tracing was discontinued, that was part of the compensation structure. Now that contact tracing has been discontinued, that's no longer part of it.
Okay.
Okay?
And then secondly, I just have to hold on a minute, this is unrelated, and it's not a question, it's a statement. It's about the new standards that are coming into effect in the fall, and I started, after our last meeting, I really started looking into it and reading exactly what the laws were, because I understand you can opt out of health classes, and that's when, and I only looked at, so far, second grade, it's a ton of reading material, my kids are young, so that's where my concerns mostly lie, but I'm curious how, so you can opt out of health, and you can't be punished for doing so. On our, on the New Jersey site, when you look up the new standards, it does say that all those topics that parents are upset about and want to possibly opt their children out, they're portraying to us this false sense of having that option, that you can just opt out your children, but then when you're reading it, it says that District Boards of Education shall be responsible for the review and continuous improvement of curriculum and instruction based upon changes in knowledge, technology, assessment results, and modifications. And then it continues to go on saying that these, these twenty-first century topics, they actually say twenty-second century, I don't know who wrote that, that it's to be sprinkled throughout every lesson, so even if you want to opt out, you can't, because it's sprinkled in all subject matter, it's not just in, it's not just in the health classroom, it's going to be everywhere. So, and earlier, they brought up, I forget the man's name, but he brought up that a video was shown, and at the end of the video, I don't, I'm not familiar with the video, but BLM is mentioned in this video, as somebody with more, and, and everything's written very liberally in this, in this assessment. I have a few red flags for me for a second grader, but as, bringing in political views into the classroom just seems very, and I guess you can't keep politics out of everything, but to be bringing in what seems to be a very one-sided view is where my problem is. So, under the Social and Sexual Health Core Idea Performance Expectations, for second grade, one of the star, one of my red flags, discuss the range of white people, express their gender, and how gender role stereotypes may limit behavior. Growing up, I'm one generation removed from current, you know, kids, growing up, it was called gender norms, it was called gender roles, now it's gender stereotypes, and we're, and we're teaching this to our second graders that now it's a stereotype, not a, not a norm. Under Community Health Services and Support, which somehow we're including, describe how climate change affects the health of individuals, plants, and animals. I don't know how that's connected to the other points that they want to teach, determine where to access homeschool and community health professions, demonstrate how to dial nine-one-one, like, all that sounds great, that makes sense, but we're bringing climate change into it. Again, it's a, it's a, it is a political issue, climate change, that's the way it's portrayed. I think we could agree that, that people see climate change as a, as a non, as a, two sides having like differing opinions, but sprinkling it into community health services, I don't see the, the connection. Then we're in career readiness, and this is where Marxism's brought in, to change it up. They want to teach a second grader that there are, they, the good things, different types of jobs require different knowledge and skills, but then the red flag, there are benefits and drawbacks to being an entrepreneur, as we want to just be having little worker bees and not, not having people do their own thing, and every profession has drawbacks, so I don't know why we would attack entrepreneurs in our great country where it's built on entrepreneurs. And finally, the, the final red flag, for lack of a better term, in the digital citizenship, again, we're bringing up climate change, under digital citizenship, young people can have a positive impact on the natural world in the fight against climate change, but that has nothing to do with a digital citizenship, where the other things are, individuals should practice safe behaviors when using the internet, digital communication allows for social interactions that can be both positive and negative, so those things go back to the title of digital citizenship, but just throwing in, that's not even, it's just a statement that young people can help against climate change. So these are all, it's not a question, it's just really looking at exactly what these, these topics that they're discussing, they're, they're making, I, these are all very liberal views, and nothing, it seems like, we're not getting both sides of things, it's just going to be how our governor is choosing to push his liberal agenda, and you really don't have an opt-out because it's sprinkled everywhere. Thanks.
Anyone else?
So back to my main question regarding the curriculum, the big question is, I understand from this nice gentleman, John, he met with, I think you're, Miss Termino? The curriculum is supposed to be finalized by August, is that, is that what we're looking at?
Yes, they'll be working on it over the summer.
Yeah, so my big question is, for a lot of us that are kind of figuring out what we should do with our children, that, that's really not enough time, because it's, there's some of us that are really trying to figure this out. The big question is, being as you all are setting policies, is the standards, I looked at the social studies curriculum myself, and for example, my child would be going into eighth grade next year, so if you look at the eighth grade civics part of the curriculum for next year, under the eighth grade social studies, they're learning all about, in other words, if you look at the Civil War under the eighth grade curriculum, they're learning about not what they were, I've compared it to what they've been learning all along, and they're looking at the United Nations, I'm not, I looked at the whole thing, it's all United Nations, United Nations, United, everything is, and then that leads you to the United Nations twenty-thirty agenda. It's not, it's just not, it, like Danielle just said, it's all one-sided, it's not the social studies that I would want. So my question to you is, is it set in stone, it's August, because I need to figure this out?
It takes a lot of time for, for.
I understand that, but it also, as a parent, I need to figure it out.
Right, so they, so they put a deadline of August on there so that, you know, the work gets done over the, over the summer. That's not to say that nothing's going to happen until the last minute, and then all of a sudden, they're going to do everything in August, they're going to be working all summer long. So once that's available, I would encourage you to, to review it and make your decision at that time.
So if we're telling you as parents, August is not, it's just not okay, I mean, you as a board, is there any part of your board that says, we get the parents, this is really not enough time? There are parents that this is not, I mean, it's one-sided.
The alternative is really to, to rush through the curriculum, which was really not appropriate either.
So is there any part of you as a board that says we can override the governor's orders, we can say we need more time?
No, that's, it's state law.
It's not state law, you as a board entity can override the governor as a board entity, you know that.
I suppose if we, if we were to tell our staff that we want it done before August, I guess.
No, what I'm saying is you can override and hold off, and keep your standards in place, so you're not even questioning to do that.
That, it's, the standards are state law, we don't have a choice but to, but to comply with the standards, but not optional.
But what I'm saying is, you know you can override that and wait a while and choose to.
No, that's not the way it works, that isn't the way it works.
Are you sure about that?
You don't get to choose which, you know, what, what laws you, you comply with.
So as a board, you're telling me you cannot override the governor?
State law, it's state law, and that this, 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 this body cannot override state law, that's correct.
That's not correct, absolutely not correct.
I'm pretty sure we're, we don't have the authority to override state law.
You can override governor's orders, yes you can, yes you absolutely can. You can say, we're going to enact them following, we need more time to write orders, and stick with what you have.
Ms. Bellard, that's not how it works, I'm going to share with you, there's standards that are set forth, and the standards are shared for public and, and for schools to review. There's a review time for those standards, and then there, there's a timeline that we have to enact those standards. We are going to be running those standards over the summer, I know that Dr. Ravino sent out. The curriculum, over the summer that are aligned to those standards. Dr. Ravino sent out a letter, I believe, last week, explaining how we understand that there's a lot of questions and a lot of feelings specific to these standards, and what would be embedded in our new curriculum. With that being said, there is, to speak to a previous question, there is an online access that you can get on to see all curriculum that we have in place.
So that answers the question then?
So I'm going to, and I'm going to finish.
If you're going to write what he, what he wants you to write in there, then there's really no decision for us.
Well, I'm going to continue, so.
I'm sorry.
Along the lines of the curriculum access, I just want to make sure that all parents know they have that access. The second piece is informing the parents of the changes that are taking place, and within the letter, it talks about, not only will we share that information, every single grade that is going to be taking part in this health curriculum, there'll be a letter that's going to be sent out to the parents, whether it's a digital letter that's housed on a parent portal, or a letter that's going to be emailed to the parents that are going to identify the teaching points that are going to be covered within those units. There's also going to be an opportunity for parents to reach out to the schools to get even further detail within that curriculum. So you will be eyes wide open prior to your student going into the lessons, and you do have an option of opting out of that, of that experience. So just so you know, we are aware that there's a lot of conversation out there, and, and as parents, there's concern about what's to come, because there's a lot of gray area, there's a lot of conversations, and then there's a lot of, well, what does it really look like in practice? There were, there were resources that were pulled to say, well, this is the curriculum, and that caused concern. There's no set curriculum for these standards. The school district is obligated to create a curriculum that identifies these specific standards and performance expectations. That's going to be shared with all of our community prior to implementation.
Okay, so one final question. What is there to share when it's written right there in the governor's order, the social studies standards are completely changed?
As Dr. Dutturo just said, the standards, we have to come up with the curriculum so that at the end of the grade level, the students meet those standards. If the Department of Education got anything right, it's pretty vague, which allows us a lot of latitude to take into consideration what we're hearing from the community. We still have to comport with state laws.
So can you add back in the stuff that they took out? Is that an option? Like, for example, the stuff that, like, on the Civil War and the stuff that they omitted, can, the stuff that's important to some of the parents that we've always taught, could that, are they, or is that, you know, important to, like, have we had those discussions?
So we align our curriculum to the standard set forth.
Okay.
Right, I just wanted to add on to what Dr. Dutturo was saying, because he had mentioned the conversation that's taking place.
Okay.
There are two different documents. The first document that was released by the Department of Ed had a whole litany of topics that should be addressed. And if you scrolled social media, or, you know, you checked our email, everyone had different types of concerns, because they believed, based on reading that document, and understandably so, that those listed topics had to be taught exactly the way that they were listed. Then, the Department of Ed followed with a second document that referred to that huge litany that everyone keeps referring to as mere examples. So right now, we're working through, what are, what examples are we going to use? And we trust in our teachers, and of course, Dr. Vavino is going to be overseeing this process, to be thoughtful enough to select the topics that work best for our district.
No, no, I went through the actual standards, I didn't use the examples.
Okay, all right, well, a lot of people are attaching just to those examples.
Yeah, I got that, yeah, no, I just went through the standards, and I just, I looked at the social studies, because that was important to our family, and then I looked at what was taken out. So I guess that was my question. Is any of that maybe, or is Dr. Vavino more the one to ask about that, if they were going to add any of that back in? Because that's kind of important. Is that something that's...
The first person you would go to is really the content supervisor. They'll be able to give you an understanding of the department as a whole, especially really grade-specific questions, or you're referring to eighth grade, whatever.
Eighth grade social studies, I just thought, because it's kind of sad that we changed social study, you know, I don't know.
So, so the social studies supervisor will be able to address any question and provide clarity that you have.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for your time. Do you want to drop? Oh, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. Hi, I'm Leah Matzel, I'm at Two Merrill Drive in Mawa. Thanks very much to everything you presented tonight, really amazing. I just wanted to mention my thoughts and my research about the optional involuntary onsite COVID-19 testing. First of all, I want to say to the board and supers, I think you guys have been the least draconian of any school district that I've heard of, as far as really coming down on the students and the families with all the different things that have come down from the state. Very, very happy and grateful that you've done absolutely the best to kind of minimize and make things as comfortable as possible for students and families. And I definitely feel that we're not your adversaries, I'm not here to criticize anything. I think of us as teammates and very proud to be involved here. I think that there's been a tremendous lack of transparency, particularly coming down from the state. That brings us a lack of trust and a lot of concern when I hear something about voluntary onsite testing. So, just kind of reading this letter, I'm not sure if you wrote it, or if it's kind of maybe a form letter that came from the testing place, because there's some wording in here that seems odd for optional and voluntary. Firstly, it describes the testing process approximately one minute, and it says, as participants become accustomed to this collection process. Now, I would think that this is supposed to be kind of really one-off, someone's going on vacation, someone's going to a wedding, they need a COVID test for the child. It really shouldn't be something they're becoming accustomed to. Second...
If I could just interject real quick, initially, like Dr. Fair said, this was for staff who chose to not be vaccinated and had to be tested every week. So that's probably what that's referring to.
Okay. I hear you. I think then that, you know, it's definitely not quite clear. There's another line in here that talks about, will allow for your child's weekly test results to be collected and reviewed swiftly? Again, I don't know why the language in here, which I'm sure you looked at quite closely, would say weekly, it just somehow suggests that potentially, this is sort of a rollout. So that's all I wanted to specifically mention about that. I want to talk a little bit about the company that we're working with, because perhaps you're not aware of it, and again, it's coming from a federal level. It's showing that, you know, you create an account, it's very easy, you can do it quickly, you do it once, and it says, specific to Mawa Township Public Schools, but the township is not holding the data. This Concentric by Ginkgo is holding the data. So also, I kind of feel like, is this a situation where perhaps a child has a runny nose, and the nurse is going to encourage a child, hey, well, have mom fill this out real easy, quick, and you should go get tested? Because I personally feel that, I don't think it's the best idea to have the nurses sort of recommending anything, medical testing or otherwise, to the kids. And I also don't think it's a good idea to have parents in a position where they have to refuse, and perhaps it's listed somewhere, refuse COVID tests.
And, and that's not going to occur. So the nurses aren't recommending anything? Well, we provided this service to parents, and we were really clear, I think we highlighted certain places, because it's optional and voluntary. So if parents...
Yes, because obviously, parents are very against mandatory. Like, I thought it was funny that some subject line, optional and voluntary, because clearly, that's a line in the sand for a lot of parents.
Absolutely, and we do have some parents who want their child to be tested weekly, and that's totally up to them, and that's why it's optional and voluntary.
Okay, super. Let me just give a quick background on why I'm finding it extremely concerning about this particular company. Ginkgo Bioworks is the one that owns Concentric. They are a synthetic biology company. They specialize in using genetic engineering to produce bacteria with industrial applications, and they are an analytics company that designs microorganisms for customers in a range of industries. Their mission is to make COVID-19 the last pandemic that catches us unprepared, not the last pandemic, the last pandemic that catches us unprepared. We dream of a future without COVID-19 variants or other biological threats. But in the event that they, this happens, we can be prepared through Concentric's early warning system. So basically, when you sign up and you register, you're kind of in their database, you're part of their early warning system. What began as a response to monitor COVID-19 became a foundation for adaptive infrastructure capable of informing communities of public health changes. So what they're trying to say is that they can adapt it for testing to anything, and potentially, your data is going to be available to the public health authorities. So I have not gone through, I'm not registering for this, so I didn't look through the consent form, but as I get further into the details of who owns this company, I'm pretty sure that the data will go around HIPAA, so that someone else can get access to your data. It's not going to be just for you. Building confidence through biosecurity, I didn't know that we needed to worry about biosecurity, but it says, to create a future where environmental and community health is within reach for everyone, we study how biology behaves around us, and to find ways to catch and contain biological threats. So they're definitely in the business of, you know, biological threats, producing bacteria, and designing microorganisms. They bought Concentric. Concentric is building next-generation biosecurity and public health platform with the aim of providing pathogen bio-monitoring at scale. The acquisition is an important step towards that. They have enough contracted and validated labs to serve tens of millions of individuals with pooled tests every week, meaning that they could take our data from our school and pool it with all the other school districts, and then they stand ready to further invest and expand their biosecurity. So basically, for public health efforts. So basically, the data could potentially be utilized to, I don't want to say create a pandemic, but it's questionable what the data with a company that produces bacteria...
Do you, I, it sounds like you're skeptical and definitely have an issue with this company, and I think you're right to not participate.
Well, I think parents need to just have a little more information, and I just have one more thing I'd like to cover of you.
My parent, there are, there are a lot of forms...
Everybody else got to speak, I'd like to just finish what I have to say, please.
I have another minute, please.
Okay. A publicly traded company, its largest shareholder is hedge-funded Viking Global Investors. It's also Viking's largest holding itself. The CEO, Andreas Halgerson, is a billionaire, level-one top executive at the World Economic Forum. Number-two shareholder, Ginkgo of Ginkgo is General Atlantic, CEO, is also part of the World Economic Forum and board member of BlackRock. So it took me five minutes to get from your email to World Economic Forum and BlackRock, and their goal is recurring revenue. They are banking on your children being mandatorily tested weekly. They cannot...
We're not, we're not doing mandatory testing, thank you.
You're not, but...
I just want to be, I just want to be very clear, especially because this is, you know, going to be on YouTube. Nothing about onsite testing is mandatory.
Yes.
It is op, it is optional and voluntary, and it's going to remain optional and voluntary.
Well, I think that it's to get people accustomed to the idea of doing this kind of testing at school.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Right, well, other parents need to hear it too.
Do you have anyone else?
That's why they shut you down, because they don't want...
No, we didn't shut anyone down. We didn't shut anyone down. And you, you had plenty of time. Anyone else? I'll have a team to close. Mr. Gismarski, second by Mr. Gallo. Close at eight forty-one. Okay, at this point, we're going to recess into executive session for personnel matters and confidential student matters. There will be no action taken when we leave the meeting, so thank you all for coming. And I may have a motion to go into executive, Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Pow.
Mr. Martinez, you can, the streaming session, at this time. Thank you.